Okay. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me at the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Commissioners' meeting for October 7th of 2020. I want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting, and when you do come to the podium, please state your name and who you are, and your address, and this is being recorded via audio and visually as well. And it is a public meeting. Any awards, recognitions, or correspondence that we have not already taken care of today? Okay? Acknowledgement of minutes of the previous meeting from September 16th?
Mr. Chairman, I have to approve what the next... Second?
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Trying to keep that up out of the microphone. Okay. Any additions to the agenda?
Yes, there is one. There is a department structure for the Assessment and Taxation Department, and that was just added, and it is in the overhead, it's not on the written one, and the Commissioners should have received it via email just recently. Number 13.
Oh, how come I don't have that? Oh, it's not on the online one?
It should be.
Well, no, it's not.
Oh, it is now, I think. A and T, yep, I've got it. Mine was too old, so... Once I refresh, I found it. Okay. Any public input, recognition of visitors that are here to speak? Nothing on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go... We're going to suspend our regular meeting and go into public hearing mode for the North County Livestock District. We'll call that meeting, the hearing, to order. And the background on this, this is the continued public hearing on the petition for the formation of the North County Livestock District. It is set for today's date, October 7th, 2020. For additional testimony and documents can be presented at the hearing. The hearing can be continued further or closed with board deliberations to follow. And there's two items requested action. One is conduct and continue a public hearing, and then the second item is take potential action on a petition.
Okay. And as further background, since the last hearing, the Board has received some additional items for the record. There was an additional memorandum put together by Jeff Newson, and then also an email from Dave Damaris, both in support. And then Mr. Simpson updated his petition in opposition with additional signatures.
We also show a map of the area, too, if you keep going down.
And then also in opposition, Tom Peterson submitted a letter, and that is also.
Okay.
And he proposed an alternative area for the livestock district.
Now, I know there's people who are going to call in, too, on the phone. Is that correct?
Right. Mr. Newson was unable to be here in person, so he should be calling in. I'm not aware... Mr. Damaris said he was not going to be able to call in because he was otherwise tied up.
Okay.
And then also, the staff report has been updated. Just for clarification purposes, the new process for the formation of a livestock district is two parts. This is the first part. And if the Board approves any district formation, then the second part of that, it's conditionally approved, and then the second part of that is that the majority of the owners within the livestock district need to sign a petition within 90 days of the Court's, of the Board's, action. So if the Board does approve anything today, then within 90 days, a majority of the landowners that own property within that area have to agree to be part of it, basically.
And that's within 90 days of today?
Yes, yes, if you approve it today.
Okay, okay.
And then the map is shown in pink, what with the proposed area, as is the original petition. If the Board wants any further discussion later on about any decreased size of that, we also have additional maps for those, too.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. All right. So at this time, we'll hear from those wanting to speak in favor of the district. And we'll start with those in the room, and then we'll get to the phone after those in the room had a chance. Anybody in the room want to speak in favor? Yep, come on up. And identify yourself and address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Williams, 43229 Holman Road, Healy, Oregon. I am a landowner that is concerned. I don't have really cattle in my vicinity yet, but my main concern is I have a commercial operating company called North Country Growers. The legality of going onto property and spraying within that cattle district is kind of tough because if there's cows in the wheat grazing, most products have a graze back period. So it makes it pretty hard for commercial spraying operations to occur. That makes the operator liable for the cattle on the property that are in the wheat. It makes the owner liable for the cattle that are in the wheat. Makes it almost impossible to attend to your crop properly in a timely fashion if there's cattle in it. That's probably my biggest concern at this point, and I think it's pretty clear in the state of Oregon that everybody should have certain land use rights, and if you own that land and you want to graze wheat, I think that you should have that right, and it shouldn't be repeated on by another person in their operation. So I think that's the biggest concern I would have, and that's something that needs to be addressed, and if that means revamping the open range laws to possibly, you know, saying you must fence your livestock in, but yet cattle will get out, and I understand the liability standpoint, maybe that law needs to be readdressed in a fashion that if cows are straying and they get through a decent fence, that maybe we should keep some of that liability in place for the cattle people, you know, so they're not, you know, totally demolished by someone hitting a cow on the road. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any others in the room in favor of the district? Okay. Seeing none, how about going to the phone? Is there anybody on the phone that wants to speak in favor of the district? Jeff, are you on?
Yeah, John, this is Jeff Newson.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, this is Jeff Newson, 82106 South June for Canyon Road, Healy. I guess, you know, the main reason we started doing this is just to shift the liability and the legal responsibility of the cattle to the cattlemen. I mean, that's just the basic gist of it. I really don't understand why it's my responsibility to fence those cattle out. That's probably the biggest concern I've seen and have had, and that's, you know, that's why this formation of the district, I think, is so important. It's just a shift to the cattlemen taking responsibility of their cattle and taking legal responsibility. And to argue, to have an argument for not taking legal responsibility, I don't understand that at all. I just, I can't wrap my head around that. I mean, when you see, you know, I'm back here in Kansas right now, and my brother-in-law is a cattle rancher back here with over 1,000 head. He, you know, especially if he happens in, he can't quite understand why open range is still even legal. You know, if you've got cattle, you've got property, you take care of your cattle, you take care of your property. But right now, it's my responsibility to take care of those cattle and keep them off my property. And that's basically the main gist of this whole deal, is just to shift that legal responsibility and be done with it. So anyway, that's the only comments I've got right now, and I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Okay. Anybody else on the phone want to speak in favor of the district? Okay. Hearing none, those in the room that want to speak in opposition of the district?
My name is Terry Simpson, 40895 Despain Gulch Road. Yes, I'm here to speak in opposition. I think they've, because of some problems they've had on a personal basis at a small area, they've decided to make a very big area included into their grazing district. I think it's kind of a stretch to say that if I have cattle trespass on my neighbor and he sprayed his wheat, that I'm going to hold him responsible for it. In no way do any of the people I know that have livestock think that their livestock should be able to trespass on someone else's property, but it's just the manner of the way things happen. Occasionally, they do get out. I think the concept of open range has been gone for a long time. No one... Back in the day, everybody's land was fenced, they pastured their mules in the wintertime, and that's all changed. We all realize that. But there are still areas in this, in this district that they propose that cattle are being grazed on an annual basis. There are many reasons for it. They need to clean up the stubble fields. Farming's changed quite a bit, so a lot of these fellows have no interest in livestock. Jim Williams stated last time that, yeah, they used to be in the livestock business, now they no longer are, so they think it's fine to change the rules. Well, I just, I don't agree. The main thing I see as a consideration is the liability of the roads. We have several highly traveled roads through this proposed district. I can't control the people that are traveling on the roads, and I try to keep the livestock off the roads, but in case one gets on the road, you know where the liability lies. And I, that's the only thing I see about the open range concept, is that it does give us a little bit of freedom from the liability. These are roads that, in my lifetime, most of them were gravel roads. Well, now they're not gravel roads, and people that have no interest in the area just travel through there. So it's become a bigger risk, and the people that are having these problems probably should have went back to the landowner in the one case, that he should have gotten his renter to do a better job of controlling it. And I don't expect any wheat farmer who has no interest in cattle to have to build fence around his property to keep cattle out. There's better ways of doing it. Fencing in this day and age is very, very expensive, and it's just not, not to be done. Anyway, we've all stated all these things before. We can haggle over it again, and we'll live with whatever the decision comes out. But anyway, that's my opposition. Thank you for hearing it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, come on up.
I'm Mike Thorne, reside at 102 Northwest Johns Lane in Pendleton. Spoke at the previous hearing and come here again today to express my opposition to the creation of the district as was proposed. At the previous meeting, I had suggested maybe there was an alternative if the county commission felt it needed to take action. In consultation with your county council, there's a preemption issue potentially with the state that may prevent in their, in his decision, the commission taking action. That doesn't preclude if the commission were inclined to pursue this with the legislature, which is upcoming, and I know in some of the comments I just heard here earlier, the possibility of some alternative approaches is still an issue. But on the face, it makes, for many of the reasons stated, no sense to encumber some 500 property owners, as was stated in the comments from the last meeting, to the liability issues unknown in many cases that a district would create. So finally, I would say that from my observation, in one of the areas where there was concern, fence is being constructed, and I think people are showing good neighborly practices by doing that. And I would also point out that in one of the other areas, if I'm not mistaken, the landowner who is allowing cattle to be pastured on their property has a responsibility to make sure that the tenant, in this case, is keeping the cows properly contained on the property. I mean, this is not a case where there isn't some liability on the landowner's side to make sure that their tenant is being a good neighbor also. And from what I have understood, that's been part of the problem in the first place that's led to the creation of the district. So I continue to believe that approving the district is not in the county's best interest and would encourage the commission not to do that. If they feel compelled to continue to pursue it, there are probably some alternatives that they may want to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room want to speak in opposition of the district? Yeah, come on up.
Good morning. I'm Ann Livingston. I live in Pendleton, PO Box 192 Pendleton. I have property in the, in the pink area, and I testified last time. I am in, in opposition of the petition. I recognize that there's, there, it was, it was offered in good faith and out of desperation. But I want to, in addition to the testimony that I've already submitted, I want to reiterate that I think there are more negative economic impacts to all the property owners within the affected area than there are, than there are benefits. And I'm speaking to the effect of the increased insurance that everyone's going to have to purchase and, and the loss of that protection, the liability protection that we all could have should it remain in the open range. So I think there's just more negatives than there are positives to the petition and to the landowners involved. And I think all the, all the people out there, even the people who have been, you know, identified, I think everybody's stepping up their act, and I think the entire experience has been beneficial to everybody out there, the awareness and the respect. I think respect is huge, and I think that people are paying better attention, and they're going to toe the line better. I really do. Hopefully, if we have to move forward with this, I hope that pink area shrinks significantly because I think that a lot of that area is not... I don't think, again, there are more negatives to this, to a livestock district than there are positives. That's, that's my testimony for now, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else in the room want to speak in opposition? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to ask on the phone, is there anybody on the phone that wants to speak in opposition? Okay. Hearing none, I'll turn it over to my two colleagues. Commissioner Elfrin, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, I have a question for the legal counsel. I have, yeah, that's legal counsel, where he could give an opinion on the difference, legal difference between open and closed range?
Primarily, it's a shifting of the responsibility. If you're in open range, if you do not want livestock on your property, it is your responsibility to keep them off. So you have to put a fence to keep them off your property. In the event of a livestock district, the opposite is true. It is up to the livestock owner to fence their livestock in to keep it from leaving the livestock owner's property. And as far as liability, if you are in a livestock district and it, some livestock does get out, the way the law is written, there has to be some probably negligence on your part to allow the livestock to leave the property in order for you to have some liability. The statute says that if you allow your livestock to get out of your property, then there is liability. So allow means you have to have some type of action or negligence. It's not per se liability. There has to be some, something shown that you allowed your livestock to leave your property.
But the principle, the principle still applies, that in order for any person in closed range to be liable for the action, for whatever their livestock do or get in the way of, in order for them to be liable, they have to have done something other than a reasonable and prudent person. That concept comes into play, that they have to have done something that a reasonable and prudent person would not have done, or they have failed to do something a reasonable and prudent person would have done. So there would have to be, pardon me if I'm wrong, some indication that the owner intentionally allowed or did not maintain the fence or allowed it to get out of maintenance, so the livestock could escape. Is that, am I correct in that, in that thinking?
Yes, you are.
And I don't know how many of those people who are here or online took the opportunity to check with their, well, I can say with 45 years of experience in the insurance field, that basic farm liability insurance does apply in this case, and if the livestock got out, got on the road, and somebody ran into them, and that party who ran into the livestock brought action, that there is insurance protection applying. I confirmed that this week, and I hope many of you did as well. So that's pretty well where the liability is. I want to clarify, clarify that for sure. Is there, Doug, is there a procedure, or how does one who is part of this map of the district, how would one exclude themselves from the district, or is that possible to exclude?
It is possible to exclude now. If you wanted to, you could remove some of the properties from the formation process if they're on the edge of it. If, once a livestock district is formed, a property owner can petition to be withdrawn from the district.
And what's required in that petition?
Basically, the same thing. You have a petition, you have notice with a public hearing, and the Board of Commissioners would make the decision regarding the withdrawal.
Does that have to approval of others in the district?
No.
And the 90-day approval process that you mentioned earlier, once this is approved, if it is approved, then it goes back and requires the signatures of all the property owners? Did I understand that correctly?
Quite, a majority. A majority of the property owners.
So is that done by petition or by election?
By petition.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Okay. Christian Murdaugh.
Mr. Chair, and I have a statement. It's a little bit long, so I beg your indulgence, but I think it's going to become evident that the Commissioners haven't discussed this matter because we actually have to do this deliberation in public. I want to begin by noting that I'm angry the Commissioners have been forced into addressing a very divisive matter. While this would not be the first time we've found ourselves in this position, it is clear the matter could and should have been avoided. Now we find ourselves weighing a decision regarding the creation of a North County livestock district that appears to be a massive solution to a problem that none of us can solve. In other situations of this nature, the issue has been left to a local vote. While that's not the case here, we have been presented with lengthy petitions on both sides of the matter. The failure to address resolutions has prevented much of North County itself. It's been my experience that livestock districts tend to result in a way of protecting landowners from mismanagement. I know this firsthand because our ranch is part of a livestock, came about for that reason. I'm also familiar with the concept of running cattle against a policeman, and it is done. As a standard of petition in opposition to livestock district, most of those Commissioners will appear in pointing out they do not endorse the idea of livestock being allowed to trespass alone at large. The concept of open range does not imply that livestock operators are not required to do their due diligence to keep their animals within the boundaries of their management, managed area. Open range is in place to protect owners against inadvertent problems. Here, the emphasis should be on unusual, infrequent, or accidental situations rather than regular abuse of the provision. We are in an agricultural area, and we need to do everything possible to assist our farmers when conducting diverse profitable operations. In this case, that mission has its previous conflicts that agree significant financial losses of what has been reported as a frequent and prolonged danger. Clearly steps are beginning which are correct design of one problem. Apologies are not the solution. It does not reflect ongoing financial losses, and I do know that I would raise the idea that could, which could make good neighbors. At our first hearing, it was reported there was a planning place to provide fences and hopefully bring the crop damage to an end. This was to be accomplished within three years, and I understand that this project is currently underway. Considering this issue, a second concern is the enormous size of a proposed district. At the very least, it would seem more practical to have at least two districts, if not three, to some data that that meant so. As I noted, there are two various typeties to this matter, whether hundreds of sports in the northeast corner and the great opposition in the western portion. The creation of a new livestock district once in place is not likely to be walked back even though there are barriers be considered to solve a problem that is much easier and more practical than evolution. Therefore, considering both sides of the issue, I cannot bring myself at this time to support such a major action by the Commissioners. At the same time, I will complete my heat frustration regarding the capital outlay and management fitness that could and should have solved the problem. I would support alternative, alternate proposal of any, which creates a livestock difference in the northeast corner as a means of starting towards resolution. With all of that being said, I don't know how my colleagues will vote, so what I'm saying might be moot. If in the end the livestock district is not created at this time, it will be a dumb round with the Commissioners to monitor the situation very carefully, and I would want to make it clear, if we are here at this time again next year discussing the same problem, my vote would be different and I'd even introduce the initiative without any particular interest in further hearings. At that point, we would like to consider proposal B, returning some support in the northwest corner as a step towards further resolution. That's my statement.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I can, I can add. I've always been a believer, as Christian Murdaugh has stated, that good neighbors, there's a history in the area of livestock, or getting out of, and away from the property that their tenant be grazed on. They should be, I stand, they should be contained. I don't think the, I haven't been, it hasn't been demonstrated to me that the negatives outweigh the positives creating a district here. And I think that the owners of the livestock should be responsible for their livestock, and now there's no compulsion for that to occur, only good neighbor feeling and... And now there's no compulsion for that to occur, only good neighbor feeling, and in the past, that hasn't always held up. Livestock have created damage. I think that most are protected from, if this becomes a closed range, most are protected by the current insurance from unusual occurrences where the livestock might break a fence and get out, or otherwise create some damage. But that would be an extreme minority of the cases, and it would be then up to a court of law, I guess, or the two neighbors working together to determine what the actual damages are. But I believe the good men is the good neighbors.
Counsel, do you have a map that shows proposal A or district A?
Yes, if you go to the very end of the pinky.
This one?
No, that one. You can't see it very well, but in orange is A and in yellow is B. Yeah, just that one. Basically, A would be Holman Road, and then the west boundary would be King's Corner Road through Juniper Canyon, up to Hartele, and then up Dorn to the state line, and then back over. And then B would be the south, Cold Springs Road would be the southern boundary, going up Agers Road to, back to King's Corner.
I have not seen those maps, and I would like to be able to see them before I can. Can I see them on the phone?
Yes, I can run you a copy right now if you want.
If you go to the agenda bill, click on the livestock district, go all the way, go all the way to the bottom.
To the bottom of what?
To the page. You click on livestock, the livestock district link, the blue link, and you should be able to...
In printed form, but maybe it'll...
No, look on, go to your computer, open up the county's home webpage.
Yeah, I want to do that.
Okay. Go to the meeting for today, and you see all the blue links that says livestock district?
Yes.
Click, click that link. Now scroll all the way to the bottom.
Okay, got it.
There it is. So those are two separate proposals, A and B?
I think A was, Commissioner Murdock could say it easier, but A would be what he's proposing now, B would be if it is not resolved late, until a later date.
Okay. Does that sound right? George?
Yes.
Okay.
But I would never propose that B be incorporated into A. If we ever got to B, if two word logos, it would become a separate district. I'm very uncomfortable with the masking of boundaries of the district. So at this point in time, I'm only suggesting we look at proposal A. It is, to be honest, a less divisive proposal, but it gets its pathway down the road, and I think hopefully it should signal the fact that we're incredibly serious about resolution occurring.
Okay.
I've not heard testimony from those who are petitioning or those who are opposed to petitioning to this particular plan.
On that map, in orange are the, is the property owned by the petitioners in opposition that signed the opposition and also voiced their opposition. Those are in orange.
Inside A?
Inside, yeah, there really isn't much inside A that was in opposition.
It's like a section, about section B.
Section B, there are several property owners. There's the Thompsons, there's Thorns there, and Livingston.
Proponents and opponents are in B?
The ones that's in B, it's just the ones in orange are in opposition.
Opposition of the livestock district?
Yes, opposition of the formation.
However, inside and outside of B is the, adjacent or inside B are the partners of opponents of the livestock district.
But inside A are those who were in favor?
Yes.
Mike Thorn's got his hand up. I want to, I want to hear from Mr. Thorn. He's coming up behind you.
Again, Mike Thorn, 102 Northwest Johns Lane in Pendleton. While it's, I apologize for interfering here, but if you're talking about map A, I'm right in the middle of it. So to suggest that I'm not a landowner in the middle of A is, as I read it, and this is the first time I've seen it, is not accurate. I'm on, I'm on north Juniper Canyon Road, and I don't know what the boundary is on the west side of A. I can't read that for sure. But I need clarification on that, because as I, as I read the map, I'm on north Juniper Canyon Road.
I think yours is to the south there. If you can see that one area between right, the canyon to that orange area, that's yours. But it's south of the road. Yeah, that's Thorn's there.
So this is King's Corner Road right here?
That's King's Corner.
Yes.
Then it's my mistake. I just couldn't read it that quickly. Let me go back and get my extra thing.
Okay, so just to be clear, you are not in section A. Is that right, Mike?
No, I still don't believe that's correct. Okay. Hartele Road, if I need to come up to the...
Here's, this is Hartele Road right here.
Yeah, and it goes into Juniper Canyon, right there where they end, okay?
Yep.
Okay, I turn and go up south Juniper Canyon Road.
Up this way?
That's right. And right in about where your finger is, there's property I thought that I owned, but maybe you've got it covered in that orange place. I think maybe I'm wrong. Okay. I think the orange covers it.
Yes.
It does. Okay, well, I'll defer to counsel. If he says I'm out when I get accused of letting the cows run off, come say what Doug Olson said.
Okay, I realize that this is probably everybody's first shot at looking at the map, so, and I know, Jeff Newson, are you still on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I don't know if you're able to pull that up from your phone or not, the map that we're talking about in here?
No, I've got my, I've got my iPad here, but I can't see the link that you were talking about.
Okay, so did you go to our, the home webpage for the county?
Yes.
Okay, about middle of the screen, it should say, well, agendas? And then you should see a link for today's, October 7th. Do you see that?
Yeah, I've got the meeting pulled up.
Okay, so if you have the meeting pulled up, on number one, it says North County Livestock District Public Hearing. You can click that.
Yes.
And if you click that, you'll see some documents pull up. Scroll all the way to the bottom of those documents.
Yeah, it won't let me click it. It's not highlighted.
Oh, okay.
Another question, legal counsel. If this proposal were adopted, is Juniper Canyon Road in the district, in which district would it be burdened, or would it be divided as a section of the road? Would that be considered part of closed range, open range? How would that be attributed?
Typically, the road is the dividing boundary, isn't it?
Right, and I think what we normally do to avoid that problem is either go to the right-of-way to the north, or make it so the right-of-way. So it's probably make it that the road is in the road, in the, within the district. So it'd be the southern boundary of the road right-of-way.
The other question, the other question, if livestock rains out of open range into that open range district, they would be subject to closed range protection within that.
It's where the property is owned. So if the livestock is on property owned within the district and wanders off into the open range, then there wouldn't be any liability off the district.
That would hold.
But it would be, though, if you adjoin it, the adjoining owners would have to make sure that their livestock does not wander onto the, if they're outside the district, wander onto the district.
Counsel, did you point out that if we should decide to give it this direction, it is provisional in that the, those who are within the proposed district would have to reaffirm their report? Is that not correct?
That is correct.
And that falls under that 90-day piece you were talking about?
Yes.
Anything else from the Commissioners on this?
From legal counsel procedure moving ahead, if we were to concur with the latter proposal with two districts, would we amend the action at this point, or how would we proceed?
At this point, you really can only form one district, and I think that's what the proposal was, that you'd form A, B would be some further action later on.
Well, there could even be a C actually, at some point. This is, I only to address proposal A.
So if we, if we agreed to A, then any additions, any B or C that require the same procedures, this is considered already? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And again, the proponents are located in section A? Not all of them?
No, they're, if they're proponents, they're in white, basically. I mean, I wouldn't say that. I didn't highlight the ones that had actually signed the petition to formation, all of their property. I don't believe that map was, it was too large to try to scan in.
And I think we're going to be perfectly clear that there are proponents of the livestock district who are in B.
That is correct. They're, they're clear throughout the whole area, are people in favor of it that signed the petition. It's just that the ones in orange are the ones who have written or expressed their opposition to the district.
And those are in the, one on my map looks like yellow?
Correct. Thorns are, and Peterson's are in B, as well as Livingston.
Jeff, I sent you an email. It should have the link of that map that we're looking at.
Okay, I'll take a look at it when it comes in. I guess, can I make one more comment?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Shaver? I think Commissioner Elfrin really stated a really true component of this livestock district is that if you've got adequate fence, you're not at fault. But what we're running into the problem is that we don't have, some of the owners out there don't have adequate fence. And when I say not adequate fence, I'm talking about an electric fence that's hooked up to a dead car battery. I think most cattlemen would agree that's probably not adequate fence, but that's not what we're running into. And if you read the livestock district state statute, it talks about adequate fence. And I think, you know, I would believe that most cattlemen know what adequate fence is. But that's not what we're running into, and that's where the biggest problem is, is for us wheat farmers, that that is not understood. And that's where the big rub is right now, is that we can go out there and see that that fence is not hot, or does not have enough post out there, and the cattle move in. But we don't have any rights right now. We have zero rights to do anything about it, except for push them back out, let them come back in, push them back out, and I've done that for three years, and we're kind of at our wits' end of what to do. And so that's why we started this process. It's not putting the cattlemen in any huge, big problem that they're going to have with legal issues, as long as they're putting up good fence. And I think some of the people that testified this morning are good cattlemen and have good fence, and they're not going to have any big issues, I believe, in the future with cattle getting out. If the cattle get out, they still are covered if they're doing everything in their ability to put up good fence and put up adequate fence. So that's, that's where it's at. I've got your email, John. I'll try pulling this up.
And you'll scroll all the way to the bottom of that.
The only difference...
Okay, I've got it. Thank you.
Yep.
... open range livestock over here for example, for its livestock, as I see it.
Well, I want to echo Commissioner Murdock's frustration that the Commissioners are put into this position. Once upon a time, it used to be, and I realize I'm preaching to the choir, it used to be the people who resigned in that livestock district would receive a ballot, and it'd be by a special election. Now it's left solely up to the Commissioners, and I'm not sure what the reason for the change was on that, but it is frustrating nonetheless. So if my two colleagues don't have anything further, Doug, would we come out of hearing mode now and go back to the public meeting?
It will end everything. I'm going to start the talking if you close the...
If we close the hearing? Okay. And then, all right. Well, do the other two Commissioners have anything else they want to say before I go back to public meeting mode?
No.
With that, I will close the public hearing and go into public meeting mode.
I thought we were closed on the hearing.
I'm sorry?
I said, I thought, I thought we already had closed the hearing.
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
So, I'm getting a shake of the head from Counsel, so I'm correct on that. So, Commissioner Murdock, did you want to make a motion on that then?
I would move for the adoption of livestock district A.
Okay, I've got a motion on the table. Is there a second?
This would take permission done of. The request will be in partridge, is that correct?
In lieu of, yes. Is that, am I saying that right, Doug? Yeah.
Well, you know, it's not necessarily punctual, but I think I still support the entire district. Why does it scream at us?
Okay, well, I have reservations about the entire district, so with that, I would second Commissioner Murdock's proposition A, or proposal A, or whatever you want to call that. So I guess with that... So I guess with that, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, and with that, motion carries two to one. So Jeff, if you're looking at that map, A will be the livestock district. For the, now, again, that has a 90-day, you want to repeat that again, Doug?
The board has conditionally approved the formation of the livestock district, and now it'll be up to the property owners, the majority of them within that area A, to sign a petition in support of the formation of the district.
Okay. All right.
The previous signature page, that we've already turned into that, count or not?
Probably not, since some of those people have changed their minds since then.
Okay.
Counsel, can we put in the record where it's related to decision on B, in hopes that the problem will be resolved, just for the record?
Okay, I think that would probably be that area B would be annexed into-
A.
A, at some future date if it's not resolved. Okay. I can put that in the order.
Would that be another motion, another hearing?
I think it may not be hearing. I think there probably would need to be a hearing, just to consider that. But again, it would be the same type of situation. It'd be conditionally approved, then be up to those landowners, whether or not they want to be within the district.
Okay. All right. So do we need to take any action on that piece?
Probably should, yes.
Okay. So Commissioner Murdock, do you want to phrase that in the form of a motion?
Yes, Mrs. Slack will do that.
Basically, that the board would consider annexation of area B into the livestock district in the event it is formed, in the event the livestock within area B are not contained.
I would second that.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That's it for livestock district, I believe, isn't it? Okay. You folks are free to stay and listen to the rest of our fascinating agenda, but judging from what I'm seeing, you're all going to, so, thank you, everybody. Appreciate your being here today. That means an awful lot to us. Okay, item number two, creation of position, human services. I think I saw Amy on there.
I'm here.
Right. We were ready for you. Did we lose Amy? Oh, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Amy Asher, ladies and director of human services. And I'm here today to- of creation of a position for peer mentor outreach.
How's the day going?
Okay.
Amy, can, hang on just a second, Amy. Hey, Jeff Newson, if you're still on the phone, would you mute your phone, please?
Think it's going to rain this weekend? Talking about it.
Okay, there's people on the phone still for the, called in for the hearing. We can hear your phone conversations. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Amy. Go ahead.
Thanks. I, so we've been awarded-
Yeah.
Some funding from Gobi, which is related to-
Sorry, I was trying to pay as much attention as I could. I was listening to the hearing the commissioners were doing this morning.
The what?
They had a hearing on the cattle district that's going on.
We can still hear you on the phone. We can still hear you. If you're done listening to the hearing, you can either hang up or mute your phone to listen to the rest of us, but we can't hear each other now.
So with the length of this trailer, do you know, is this, what can I put on a pub here?
You can go to-
If we hang up, can we call back with that?
You can zip up to 30,000.
Yeah. Because technically if-
Can we mute them?
You've been muted. To unmute yourself, press the star key twice. Mute off.
Okay, if you're done listening to the hearing, please mute your phone or hang up. The hearing is over for the livestock district.
I think I muted everybody on the-
Oh. Okay, thank you. I'm not sure, was that Dan? Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, sorry about that, Amy. One more time. Third time's a charm, or fourth.
All right. This is going to be like the best.
Must be.
So I'm here today to present, to create a new position, a peer mentor outreach position. We received some dollars from Gobi through their state opioid response grant that would allow for us to hire a peer that instead of doing direct service, would be out in the community, doing more education with community partners, hospitals, EMT. So it's not that our peers currently do, but because they are really strapped with serving clients, we needed something to continue our outreach efforts. And Gobi was gracious enough through their grant funding to offer us money so that we could do that for one year. And so it will be a one-year position, and that position would continue based on Gobi's dollars that would come in from the state for continued state opioid response.
So again, that's grant-funded, not general fund dollars.
It is grant, yes, yeah, totally grant-funded.
Okay.
If the grants dry up, then the position goes away. Is that correct? That's part of the motion here today?
It does, yes.
Mr. Chair, I would move for approval for creation of a peer mentor position subject to continuation of grant funding.
Well, I will second that, noting that Amy had me the first time she presented.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Number three, uncollectible taxes.
I believe you'll take one.
I don't know if she wanted to talk about this or not. If not, there are a number of personal property tax accounts for manufactured structures that are before the board for cancellation. The units have been removed from the county or destroyed or no longer have any value, so there is no way these taxes can be collected through the seizure and sale of the property. So what the proposal is, is to cancel those taxes and eliminate those accounts.
Primarily housekeeping, isn't it?
Yes, it is, but it does require board action to cancel taxes.
Move the, move adoption of order TX 2020, that, oh, nine.
Got a motion, is there a second?
I'm, I'm saying, you know, Rachel doesn't have a wife. She put in the chat session, so I suggest that if you want to petition, just go over to the boardroom, which I think is empty at the moment.
Yeah, she could, she's fine to come in here.
And there's another item on the agenda that she could talk about as well. So I don't know if you want to move up item 13.
Yeah, if she comes in, we'll move that up. Ah ha, there she is. Please make your way to the microphone.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Reynolds, and I'm the Director of Assessment and Taxation. So yes, this is a housekeeping matter. We have to have the court's approval in order to abate taxes on manufactured homes that are no longer in the county or have been destroyed.
Okay. So we do have a motion on the table. I don't remember if there was a second, but I don't think we did.
I will second.
Okay, got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, and we're going to bump up item number 13 now, since you're right here in front of us, which is the assessment taxation department structure. And that's the pinky there, I believe, so. How's that for going under fire?
Yep, absolutely.
Baptism under fire there.
So with this, we are asking to move a couple of positions, create, one will be a movement and one's another creation. So to start with, the tax collector was a management position. We've dropped that down to an appraisal data analyst for taxation. And then the other part of it is, we had a commercial position open that we'd like to turn into an appraisal supervisor, so they'd oversee all of the appraisal work, keeping with uniformity, and also projects that are going on and making them more cohesive departments, so they're not going in segments. And so those are the two changes as far as dollar-wise. I think we calculated it to be a wash, and that, we also asked to keep the deputy director position as well.
So this is, this is the look that you're wanting for your department, then?
Yes, it is.
Perfect. Commissioner Murdock, were you about to say something? Did I cut you off?
No, I actually have been very much involved in this process and, and supporting it. I, the only reason I went to offline picture is the fact that I'm sitting next to a blueberry muffin.
Well, I didn't care why you went offline. Okay.
Are you, I, I'm moving forward with that.
I, okay, I would just, but say I entertain a motion. And did you second that? Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We'll give you more warning next time. Okay, road vacation. I think I saw Matt Kenny on there earlier. I don't know if he's still with us.
Yes, good morning, Rich Searns.
Good morning.
Unitella County Public Works previous supervisor. So according to today, we have a road vacation proposal for East Amarak, Amarak. This is kind of a portion of a great road vacation that we compared a year ago that they go through. This is the remainder of that. It's located in Hermiston, near the intersection of Howard and, just east of the Highland Mills Elementary School. The petition has been signed by 100% of the joint owners, therefore didn't need to go through the public hearing process. There have, there have been some comments that reached out, both Bob Walter, our hiring director, as well as Juan Spencer, the city Hermiston planner, related to this vacation. As I felt that their, both their needs and assessment of public interest would better support, I think, the overall view of the county in this particular case. And so our recommendation reflects that, comments that Bob Walter provided. Overall, I'm going to quickly go over the report without repair and name highlights and details describing what they're for vacation. If you're looking at the map, it's on page 13 of 20 view of the package that prepared, and highlighted there in red, and that's the portion that's supposed to be vacated in this petition. It's a 30-foot little early easement that was dedicated by Uteso County, and it was originally obtained via E-Ball access in 1974, before eventually being dedicated to Public Works by Uteso in 2005. If the petition, if this does go through the portion of road goal, it will revert back to the T-Son property, which is tax on 711 to the south. The property is currently used by adjoining landowners for pasture and yard space. It's undeveloped and unoccupied. We have known utilities in the right-of-way, and the fence line is, is centered on what would be the road right-of-way. Overall, as I mentioned before, the assessment of public interest is based on those previous documents provided by the city and our county planning department. The ultimate goal, petitioners, as it was presented, was to return the land to a blank plate format, so that the new and improved road network be developed by providing that land. That was with the goal that the, the current east west road network of Amarak is, is more of an impactful format, and they felt that they can provide a better road network for the public and justify the layout of this current property in the area. The primary concern of this vacation was the land-locking of Gilliland parcel, which is currently very in post-vacation. If it were to go through as proposed, that lot would be landlocked, even though Gilliland, Marilyn Gilliland signed a petition consenting that she knew it would be landlocked, and she agreed to that. However, it's still somewhat of a concern to both public and the Public Works Department. And so we, we are moving to recommend that we receive a physical letter from the city Hermiston that indicates that applications for annexation and subdivision are satisfactory to the state, and that the road network as proposed will preserve access to that tax lot 704. Hopefully, this would allow the developer and the landowner to pursue the development without worrying Amarak being, having to be developed, and also satisfy the concerns of both the county and the city. That is all I have for this. If you have any questions for me?
I have a question for you. What happens if Marilyn Gilliland sells that property? Would that be a problem in the future for the future landowner?
It would, yeah. I think the fact that it's landlocked, it prevents the sale of that property. Whoever's buying it, they didn't do diligence, that would be something that they won't look into. But if, I do know that the current shadow plats they provided in the city, they do provide access to that parcel via the supervised road network. I personally am not too aware of what that looks like, but according to Clint, it's something that they are somewhat satisfied with.
But they have not approved it yet?
Clint has via email approved the vacation as is, given the shadow property is seen. But as mentioned, I know that their own public department and Public Works still has concerns over the parcel being landlocked, and that it's not something that's in writing or by plot, it's not something that's been done. It's just kind of a plan at the moment. Not that we might see something more concrete.
But that has not been submitted and go approved yet, is that correct?
That's correct.
So are we getting the cart ahead of the horse here? Are we approving something being out of order for the process of developing a piece of ground?
I, I don't, I think it's, it's an effort to do it and conduct it with. I think the problem lies with the fact that Amarak, the requirement is Amarak being approved all the way to 10th Street, that's what the city plans to keep in the project development, the Jones parcel, with, without Amarak there, or with the condition that, so part of this order is a condition that we have received an optimization from the city that says if they receive, the shadow platform will provide access to this lot. And if they, if and when the developer pursues to develop the Jones parcel or the T-Son parcel, it would be subject condition to this board order, which would be to preserve that access. But it also allows the developer to proceed with their development without concerns over development of Amarak, which it seems like has been a hang-up as far as Jones selling her property for development purposes.
And I guess timing-wise on this, it's-
And I guess, timing-wise on this, it's really... As long as Tamarack is there, the partition or subdivision plant really can't be finalized. So it needs to go away before the subdivision plant's finalized. And that the reason it's in the order, it's conditioned on that happening. So the joint or property never will be landlocked, the way the order's written, because the order won't be effective until the... They have the new access to it.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at the pictures. It looks like there's a big... Oh, is that a locust tree or something like that? Right in the middle of the vacation anyways. So not like you're going to drive a rig down there.
It's not used now. I don't think there's anything on the Gilliland property.
It does not look like it. Okay.
Well, there's multiple work that would have to be developed by the city of Hermiston to push Tamarack on through 10th. And I don't think their intent or their plan includes that. So if the further development of this property is contingent upon vacating, is that correct? That it would be contingent upon us vacating this piece in order to move the entire thing ahead?
Yeah, I think that's the gist of it, is that the interest in developers, not that it's a hang-up, it's Tamarack Avenue. If they can get their approval from that, their proposal will satisfy the city, and ultimately vacate Tamarack. And there would be some interest in property development here.
And the contingency, if that doesn't happen, is built in the order, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
I would then move adoption of order R D 2020-14. Second?
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next on our hit parade, if I can hit the back button. Come on. Adams Community Benefit Plan Grants.
I think this is one that came directly to Gilliland. I was not part of it. I did not know what was actually going on. They didn't know that they should invite me. We clarified that considerably at this point. And they met on August the 16th and approved some granting from their funding to the Umtown County Health District, a $5,000 grant, and a grant to the head city hardware. Any amount of... Or excuse me, the... On behalf of the city of Adams, up to $30,000 for engineering costs for stabilization, pre-check of the city park. I would move adoption of order B C C 2020-070.
Okay, any further discussion? Is there a second on that? Oh, okay. I couldn't tell if that was somebody else on the phone or if that was you eating your muffin. Okay, got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Sam Cooke Building Repairs Payable.
Good morning, commissioners. Dan Lanai, Director of the Land Management Services. Before you, is the payable for the flooring with the Sam Cooke building up there. We had to replace all the linoleum flooring, so there's the payable for that. It's over the $5,000. To replace that flooring was $6,000, and let me put the document here. $6,602,10.
Then insurance, Dan?
Well, we have $1,000 to that goal, and it's supposed to be covered under the... We have $1,000 to that goal, so... Yes.
So $5,602.51.
Well, there's other items that were on our insurance, so we have that. Oso Clean has to come in and do the remediation. I don't hear what you're saying.
I think...
Make sure there's no vote, anything like that, or anything else. So there's several items that happened.
I think the... I think the insurance check was over $13,000.
I don't remember what the total was on the check. We did it before they received it, then promptly.
Okay, I would entertain a motion on that.
So...
Second?
A motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't know where council is on this, but I think that we need to check rather quickly or rather soon regarding when we do or do not own the Sam Cooke building.
That would be nice, I'm going.
Yeah, I don't know where we are on it.
He's coming up.
Well, that's going to happen quite some time in the future, because it'll be sometime after the new building's constructed. And they're still just working on the financing of it right now, and they're going out for a design.
So yes, we still own it?
Yes, we will, and probably for another two years.
Okay.
We better pursue that with the city of Hermiston, because I think it's going to be sooner rather than later that we return the Sam Cooke building over to them.
I would imagine that we'd still have to make those repairs prior to turning it over.
Yes.
Okay. Boiler Repair Payable.
The boiler here at the staff hand so... Means you do yearly maintenance on it. But also, our boilers get moved. You know, they're not the greatest boilers to begin with, or wear out. And so parts have to be replaced, and so that's what maintenance on $4,000 there. And then replacing the injector and fixing some of these burner was another $2,400. So the total before the repair is... What is it there?
$8,600.
$42,000 for repair for maintenance on the staff hand. And they do have a note that they're getting to the point that their families on the heat exchange will need to start thinking about looking at replacing those boilers there, too. So just something to have in mind, that we're working too hard preventing the maintenance list.
Do you have a rough idea of a replacement cost on one of those?
You know, I would assume it'd be similar to what we did here at the courthouse, but it would be a little less. We paid about $80,000 per boiler. I would assume these would be less than that each, I guess, building is. Sorry to decide, I think.
Okay.
Are we giving them a useful life out of these boilers? Are they lasting as long as they ordinarily should?
Well, there's a couple of points on that. One is, when you build a building, usually our things, our problem is the boat bitter. And that's where it comes on the infrastructure. But number two, on that, the more energy efficient the boilers are, they don't last quite as long as the old cast iron, heavy-duty boilers we used to use, so they do wear out a lot quicker. And, you know, so we've had these for 15... 2005, I think, so 15 years now. And we had to rebuild it about six years ago, one of the boilers. So, I mean, the general, we had to replace relatively soon, two of the same boilers over there. We had a similar issue.
So are we putting building back with like kind and quality when we do this, or are we going to an upgraded version?
We try to get something that's better. We look at efficiency, because we get energy money there, and we want to save energy. But also, at the same time, if we can do efficiency and quality, we can get the last longer. And that's similar to what we did here at the courthouse here recently with those. We want to have about the better quality boilers, but they do cost it.
Essentially, when the building were built, we got what we paid for.
Yeah, you have to cut somewhere, and that's the easier part than cut.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Chair, I move approval. Dan, is this approved in Chilner?
This is that staff hand sale building, so...
If we're going to get a Chilner, I want to ask a thank you. Okay, I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Am I the only one voting for it? Okay, all opposed?
Who's our chair?
Hello?
I didn't hear him.
He gets muted, Melinda. You're muted there.
Am I still muted? How do I unmute? Right there. Ah! Okay, so we got a motion. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sound like a Verizon commercial. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. That sounds better than last time. Last time, I was the only one that voted for it. HVAC System Payable.
So the next one is for the actual courthouse here, Hamilton. And it's for maintenance on the system here. And it came by when they did it, they found that the coils in most of the air handlers have never been cleaned. So they went through and cleaned all the dust through the air handles. Without... You lose efficiency, because you're not able to blow that air in through your coils. And so they did all that cleaning, and that was the total there for that, were $8,054.
I'm repaid.
Go ahead.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Election Scanner Purchase. Wow, this really is the Dan Lanai Show, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm getting a little tired. Before you, is a proposal to purchase, a sales agreement, a scanner that has software, so the majority of this project, with signature recognition. This system here automatically will pull the signature from our system and compare it using algorithms to determine if it's the actual signature. And it'll go through, so as I said, all the signatures, the ballots are going through. It will go ahead and approve the ones that the signature's matched automatically. And then our board workers just have to go in and check the ones that don't match. So with COVID and all, workers trying to thread people out, this allows us another, you know, process, ballots automatically verify those signatures. So that's a bigger part here. All the verification is what this system has. We applied for a grant with the Center for Tech and Civic Life, and it was formed to buy one of these systems. And so the grant pays the cost for the system. We went out to have to get one of these, and we were awarded the grant. So now we're trying to move towards and get this in time, and it's called for the election. It is a total of $46,134, and that's what our grant is for.
And hey, this would reduce costs. You would have to have enough people there sitting, checking the signatures and going. So is there a reduction in cost of overhead to do this? That's question one. And question two, is there some means of verification that the machine is accurate in doing the job it's supposed to do?
Well, we also look at those, and this is the... There's only one provider for this software that everybody uses, that there's copyright on understanding on it. And so it's been tested with other counties. Some of the bigger counties are using it in state already. The... Yes, it should improve us on accepting some of these signatures, which... And less handling. But at the same time, we're getting... We have... We have $34,000, no, $38,000 at our last presidential election. And now we're sitting at over $46,000. So I got $8,000 more voters. And that just means there's more ballot to process. And with that, this just helps speeds us up a little bit. And as things go, we'll wait till the last minute. So we'll get 20% or something of our ballots on election day. And that's our main problem. You will hear the five in the morning, trying to go through... Because we can't count those ballots until we verify those signatures. Everything's upholding to that ballot is verified, we'll get less voting by that person.
Well, we hope all 40,000 plus up will vote. That would be an encouraging thing. But my question, we will always have conspiracy theories coming in about whether something's been manipulated or changed, or... I just want to verify that there is some system for verification that the machine is doing what it's supposed to do. Other words, feeding an inaccurate signature through just a second. I don't know what the check would be, and I certainly have no idea what algorithms do or how they work. I just want to make sure it's going to do the job, do it right.
Well, as we're setting things up, we'll be verifying that things are working correctly. The stage you see Clinton's in place with most things, rules and regulations, that we do several verifications with our ballot counties, just to report after the election. And I'm sure we will be doing things similar on this to make sure that, just for our sake and our peace of mind, that they are verifying correctly.
Thank you.
Okay, I would entertain a motion on that. He moved. Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that.
Thank you. We have one more item.
The BOPDA board appointments?
Yes, so before you use the opted board appointments, and that's probably most questions on it, because we're creating a board pool. So two of our members left of our three-member board. Chris Wallace is the only remaining board member. And we have Jerry Baker and Bill Elfrin, the new... Bill will be put into a governing, county governing board, because as you know, Bill will not be a commissioner come January 3rd. I can't remember when the slurring end day is there, but no longer will be a commissioner. So at the time that the actual BOP here will be a regular person. But at the moment, we're nominating here that we have to. He is a elected official.
So... Is your chair actually clear on this issue?
Yep, I would assume so. So I hear... Say that again.
I'm moving for acceptance of the nominees.
Okay.
Normal citizen Elfrin and normal citizen Jerry Baker.
Well, I will second that. Does that mean he is not normal currently?
I had a pretty opinion for Chris Wallace here.
Oh, so we're also appointing her as well?
Yes, I think she's being reappointed, I guess.
Oh, reappointed, okay. So did you want to include that one on your motion?
If they just adopt the order.
Oh, so if you just adopt the order according to council, that would take care of everything? B C C 2020-069, was that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, well, I will second it with the conflict of interest. So all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Okay, motion carries with one abstention.
All right, thank you, commissioners. I'm done.
Chair, want another election?
I think that was more of a railroad, but... Okay, Transit Planning Grant. I think Bob Walder's on, isn't he?
Good morning, commissioners. Bob Walder, county planning director. Real quick, we are working our transit program, our transit coordinator, Stacy Kim. She's on the call today, and she's going to deliver the presentation of what this grant will cover. But basically, we're seeking your approval to apply for some needs-based CARES Act funding that would help with some post-COVID transit information to riders, as well as assisting with the development of a transportation system plan. So there's money available for planning activities. So with that, I'll turn it over to Stacy, if she's on the phone, to give you a little more information about what the grant will cover.
Stacy, are you on the phone with us?
I believe she's one of, she's on her cell phone and I believe that maybe you're muted.
Uh, Stacy, try star six if you're muted. Can you click the participant one?
Would, would Dan be able to unmute the two cell phone participants that called in?
Doesn't look like they're muted on our end, according to Belinda. Can't, yeah, I think she's right.
Well, I'll do my best then to, uh...
Yeah, they are.
...inform you about what the grant will do. It, it's in the agenda item before you, but, uh, basically, uh, it's gonna allow the marketing of, um, the routes and all the transit routes we have here in Umatilla County to reengage riders, um, during this pandemic and afterwards. And then we've all been coordinating with Frank Pommitt, our regional, uh, transit coordinator at ODOT, who actually suggested we seek out these funds to assist with the development of a trans, transportation system plan, which has been, uh, a document that's been, uh, recommended in some of our other, uh, transportation planning documents. It's just the funding hasn't been available and with this CARES Act, we may be able to, um, access some of these funds. So we, we needed to let the board commissioners know that, um, if we are selected, the county would be the recipient of these funds, but, um, and they would go towards hiring a consultant to help with the, um, post-COVID, um, re-engagement, if you will, as well as the, uh, development of the transportation system plan.
Bob, a quick, Jim, that's the 356,000 dollars come in, that's the, coming from CARES grant, on the second grant?
That, that's my understanding, Commissioner. Um, again, the primary, uh, Stacy's been the one that's done most of the work on this, working with our different transit providers to see what, uh, their needs are, uh, during COVID, as well as, uh, what their long-term needs are, which that's how the, um, the, the plan part we meant to play, um, was based off for combination of the transit providers.
My, my concern was if this grant issue partially support the operation of those routes, what happens when the COVID funds are gone because they will go away? Uh, how are we going to support it after that point? Will they, will we have a fund coming from the, from ODOT that will do that?
Yeah, so I don't know that, um, most of this funding will go towards the development of the plan as well as, um, you know, follow-up from, from COVID and how, you know, it's affecting ridership and encouraging, I think the marketing encouraged more ridership. So it shouldn't affect, um, none of it's gonna go to providing additional, uh, transportation routes or anything. Most of those, um, additions or changes in service will come from other, uh, funds, uh, specifically like this transportation improvement fund or STIF funds that, um, we're, we're starting in on another cycle of those. So, um, I don't see it, um, once these dollars go away, it, it shouldn't impact, uh, the transit providers' ability to continue to provide service.
Thank you. I would move, move, second?
Got a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Environmental Health 2021 License Fee. I saw Joe on there earlier. Is he still with us?
I am here, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Yeah, this is, uh, Joe Yumara, Director for Youth and Health. And so what I'm asking for, um, over the last couple of years with the vacancies, we've had, um, the additional fund for the contingency. Uh, these are funds paid for by licensed facility owner. Um, they have to pay their fees, um, we use the fees to support the program. We've had, had some extra money in there over the last couple of years. Uh, additionally this year, as we have a full staff to do COVID activity, uh, all of that time is covered under COVID funding, not the licensed restaurant funding. So we have a bit of funds there that I'm, I'm asking if we can apply those to people's renewals for this next, this next calendar year. Um, this would be changing, we, at least, we do cover 40% of the fee for them as a renewal for their businesses. Um, we don't yet know how many folks are gonna be renewing, how many folks, you know, have hooked up through the COVID, you know, pandemic. And this will be the first chance, you know, we get to see how many of these businesses are, are still trying to keep going.
So this will also cover the Morrow County business?
I mean, we would send an invoice with the discount, are we showing? There's, there's nothing they need to do to opt in or anything. Um, as long as they've got an existing license with us, we, we would essentially apply this discount, um, as long as they pay on time, um, because we get into, uh, difficult issues with statute requirements on late fees if they don't pay on time. So, um, the easiest way to apply this was to everybody, um, we would essentially cover it with the contingency funding and also maybe doing it that way, it would apply for the, the establishments we oversee in Morrow County as well, without them needing to take any specific action for that.
And these are the businesses, probably, you know, most all of them on that list look like those that were really hammered this year with the pandemic.
Yes, yes, they were. And I made no mistake, you know, a couple hundred dollars in the course of a year. Uh, I don't expect this to, to be a lifesaving line for them, but it's, it's a step we can take.
But it's an important step, too. Yeah, agreed.
I would move approval.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we already moved up to item 13, so Commissioner reports. Commissioner Elfrin?
Well, just to report that I am scheduled for the radio tomorrow that's, uh, a back-to-back performance after being there two weeks ago. Also in light of that, uh, because of a medical necessity, uh, I'm not gonna be able to keep that engagement, but I have arranged for Dale Primmer to, to go on the air and, educate us all. Is that Kayla Raye or Kayla May? Anyway, you. Well, you hold the record there, but Dale, I haven't seen it. He has that opportunity. Of course, they do cut off, they kind of, they would cut us off at nine o'clock, so...
He has the opportunity and the ability. Anything else?
No, that's all we got.
All right. Commissioner Murdock?
Nothing here.
All right. I too have nothing further to add, so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.